Okay, today is Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021. I call the Village Board meeting in order. Our clerk tonight, please call the roll.
Trustee Zarnik?
Here.
Trustee Feigler?
Here.
Trustee Frankie?
Here.
Trustee Lister?
Here.
Trustee Prochnow?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
All board members are present tonight, and yes, Jen is filling in tonight for Lori. So Jen, welcome, and we'll try to be nice and gentle. I'm telling you right now, I'll probably call either Lori, Reenie, Pat, or Judy during the night, am I right, George? All of our previous clerks, so I don't do it on purpose, so I apologize in advance if I should make a mistake. So, with that said, we now do the pledge allegiance and the invocation. Tonight, we have the invocation for our new priest at Queen La Rosy Church, Father Dan. Father, if you'd come down, please.
Well, thank you very much for inviting me, thank you for having me, and I want to say it's also, I'm also the priest for St. Julian Church, so that nobody gets mad at me over there as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I pray in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Loving God, may everything we do begin within your inspiration and continue with your saving help. May all of our work find its origin in you and through you reach completion. As we gather this evening, keep our hearts open to your movements among us, so that through all of our discussions, all of our conversations, everything that we do, we may be mindful of those who are most in need, and be mindful of all the good that you place in our hearts, the good works that you place before us, that we may live in them. All these things we ask through your son, Christ our Lord, amen. In the Father, in the Son, in the Holy Spirit.
Flags to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Folks, please be seated, pardon me a second. We want to welcome Father again to the community. Just say, oh, Father's got ties to Elk Grove. He graduated from Elk Grove High School in 2003, same year as my oldest son, TR, graduated. So he's a, we call him a local guy, and we're glad to have him back, glad to have him back as a priest, and looking forward to it. And what we do, Father, one thing you learn over the years with our little idiosyncrasies in the village, we put out, they're dark chocolate, because my heart doctor says I can eat dark chocolate, so that's good, but there's an actual logo of the village on these, and so we want to give you some extra ones, so at your sermon on Sunday with all the sugar, you'll go very quickly, right? That's a good thing, George? Be careful.
Does that work on mayors too?
Yeah.
We're going to convert Trustee Prochnow to Catholic, and we'll work on for Father. Welcome to Elk Grove. We look forward to working with you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Come here, take some chocolate, please.
Okay, we then move on now to the approval of the minutes of March 9th, 2021.
I move we approve the minutes of March 9th, 2021, and dispense with the reading.
Second. We have a motion by Trustee Zarnik, second by Trustee Lister. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show that's approval. We now move on to the mayor and board of trustees report, and thanks to Mr. Frankie's recent comment, it'll only be three and a half hours tonight, so we'll make it short for just him. But we do have a lot of things going on we want to talk about. And one thing I'm going to announce tonight, we have to be very careful, I got to make sure my tongue doesn't fall off during it, so I'm going to try my best. But before that, we did a chance to announce, if you remember last board meeting, we announced how Elk Grove is going to be open this summer. Our concerts are coming, our Memorial Day celebration's coming, Rotary Fest is coming, Play Party Picnic's coming, Oktoberfest is coming, we are getting back to normal.
Parade.
And parades coming, we are getting back to normal, and we're going to do it in a safe manner, firm but flexible. But if you saw everything the governor's put out recently, we're going to be there. I'm going to jump the gun a little bit, let me talk, I'll open up, I'll talk about COVID and all that. So with that announcement, we got great coverage. Couple mayors were not too happy with me. They, they announced, we announced, we're opening up, you saw our Frontier Days on tonight saying, they're not going to have their event. I talked to Mayor Daley and Mayor Schaumberg that night, the article came out and said, he goes, Craig, you put me in a tough position. We were on the fence, kind of leaning against September Fest, now you're coming out in July with your concerts, I got to reevaluate. So I said, well, Tom, you guys think positive, you can get through it. But again, COVID has been tough, we know that, we've talked about it, but the numbers are getting better. And if you look at what the governor's doing, one, he's got the state as one big group now, he's not sectioning us off, so we're not one against another area, that's good. Two, the numbers he put out, and I got the numbers right here from the governor, shows that as of last week, one in four adults aged 16 and over have been vaccinated with at least one shot. That's 25%. And they said, once we get to 50%, then we're going to be open, we're going to go from the bridge step to open, phase five. Well, we're, remember, our events don't start for almost three months, some four months away. We should easily be there. Remember, we announced that starting April 12th, anybody over the age of 16 can get a shot. No more 1A, 1B, 1B+, everyone can get a shot. So that's going to help. The vaccines are coming in, and it's getting better and better. And so we're excited about that. Matter of fact, we're already going to set the date for our Play Party Picnic, our yearly event, we do at the library and the park district, that's going to be on Sunday, July 18th. So we've already got that set, we're moving forward. And our Trustee Prochnow has been meeting already, putting together Memorial Day. Rotary Club has met with me and Zarnik and put together the plans for Rotary Fest. So we're moving forward. Again, we're firm but flexible, obviously something drastic changes, we'll modify. But we don't see that happening, folks. CDC, matter of fact, they had Dr. Fauci on his show last week with Senator Rand Paul talking, you're vaccinated, and you're by another vaccinated people, you do not need to wear a mask, you do not need to social distance, that's the CDC guidelines. Again, so fully vaccinated people together are safe. They keep coming out with more and more studies saying when you're fully vaccinated, it's very rare, if almost impossible, for you to transmit the COVID. So again, people that don't want to get vaccinated, I respect that. Wear a mask to keep your safety going, but don't rest the rest of the world, stop. We can do it safely, we're going to do it safely, and we feel very confident about that. Speaking of vaccinations, we had our first COVID event, shot vaccination event, last Tuesday, on the 16th, and it went unbelievably well. We gave out 1,638 shots, we gave out every single shot we had. We had 41 at the end, and the 41st person got it that day, so we gave them all out. It went so well, Osco Drug was the one administering the shots. It was going so well, their top director for vaccinations, Chief Michael knows that, we talked, came over here, not the one that was assigned here, or her boss, the guy above him, came over here to see our event. And he said, Mayor, I've seen hundreds of events, your event ran better than anything I've seen, and it's your first time doing it. He was so impressed with how we did it. So of course, I immediately started strong-arming him, saying, we want more. Well, when he was leaving, he said, you are going to get more, at least one more, probably more than that. So we're guaranteed at least one more, we're waiting for that date. So once we get it, we'll get word out to the public again. We asked him that we wanted under 65 years of age, he said yes, we do under 65. The over 65, which our first event was, in Elk Grove residence, we basically didn't have people signing up for the past three, four days before the event. So we feel very confident that almost every senior over 65 that wanted it, got it. We did everything we could to get them in there. And so we worked hard, but we were able to get them if they wanted it. Our phone lines were open for several days, getting almost no calls. But that doesn't mean you, if you're over 65 and you won it, you can still get it at our next one, we're not dying. But we keep reminding people, don't just wait for our event. Check your Walgreens, check your Osco, check Displayings, they've got the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine going, check around, don't just rely on us. Matter of fact, a lot of seniors that signed up for ours dropped out before our event, which opened up to more people. They said they happened to get somewhere else, they got into a different one, which is fine. We give out, ours was Pfizer shot, which means they're all coming back on Tuesday, March 9th.
April 6th.
April 6th, I apologize. Tuesday, April 6th, election day, actually, they're coming back, same, so we tell people, same location, the pavilion, same time, and you're going to get the same quality service from our people. So come back, you get your shot, you'll be fully vaccinated two weeks later. So by April 23rd, you'll be fully vaccinated, maybe two weeks after your second shot. So we hope you get more, we're going to keep pushing for it, and it's quite a, quite an honor for this village, and I think makes us feel good to get so many people outside of Elk Grove, like Osco executives and all that, so on a great job we did. And speaking of the great job we did, I want to tell our department heads here today, please, pass on to all your staff, our people did an absolute unbelievable, phenomenal, exemplary, I can't say enough words, job that day. Trustee Prochnow, Trustee Zarnik, all of us were talking earlier, coming on our executive session, how many compliments we're still getting. We're getting compliments like you wouldn't believe, and you would not believe the stack of cards, emails, letters, phone calls we're getting from our residents, how happy they were, and we thank our residents for reaching out. We want to make sure these get out to our people. But let your employees know, they did a job, I was never, and I've been proud of this village a lot of times over the years, I was never so proud in my life of Elk Grove than I was on Tuesday, March 16th. It was unbelievable. It was. I'll give you an example of what happened. A lot of the people, we had wheelchairs for everybody. Matter of fact, my one secretary in my office, who's 77 years old, she pulled up to get out, Kobe, first thing, the guy almost opened the door for her, you need a wheelchair, sitting right there with him. You know, she goes, no, I'd find, take it all. But that's the kind of service, she goes, Craig, I thought I almost had to tip him. I mean, the service is unbelievable at the door when they pulled up. But Kobe had some of his younger guys, we had wheelchairs there, we had 30 of them there. When they got there, the seniors got there, they needed help, they got in a wheelchair. Our person took them the entire time in the wheelchair, all the way to the sign-up table, to the second sign-up table, then to the vaccination area, stood there, talked to them, waited with them till the vaccination was done, then the 15-minute wait time, then they took them back out to the car. That, the one I saw and heard about, he's like 23, 24 years old, these are young people. Nowhere in Public Works Training are you trained to do service like that. To show even further what this young man did with one of the seniors, one of the seniors had to go to the bathroom, obviously being in a wheelchair, needed assistance. That young man took the senior into the bathroom, helped him into the stall, waited, was done, helped him get out of the stall, in the chair, and took him for the shot. I tell you, folks, that is unbelievable, that kind of help. And again, they didn't have to go that far, but they did. We had a fireman, when we did a phone bank for people to sign up, a woman called up, and she had a hard time writing, I believe, and, you know, understanding everything to write down, and she wanted her daughter to know what was going on. Their firefighter said, don't worry, ma'am, got the daughter's phone number, he took the time to call the daughter then, and relay everything to her, to set everything up, so the mother was not nervous, it was going to be perfectly fine. That is kind of stuff, you don't learn that in fire academy, but our guys did that, and that went beyond, above and beyond. We had some people that felt a little lightheaded afterwards. Our paramedics were on them like that, helping them sit down, helping them take care of them, taking the blood pressure, making sure they felt fine, escorting them to where they have to go. You don't teach people that, it's natural with our people. Our policemen, helping with traffic, even Trustee Schmidt bringing up his old traffic control days when he was a police officer, directing people on, unbelievable. And that will, let all your employees know, this will not be forgotten by this board, and it's never going to be forgotten by this community. And then our volunteers, we had over 100 volunteers that day. At times, we had more volunteers than people getting shots, and we're giving 250 shots an hour during our height during that time, 250 shots an hour going out, and our volunteers were absolutely unbelievable. So again, let your employees know what a great job they did, let them know, people are still talking about it, I, I'm telling you, that was Elk Grove's finest day, but it shouldn't surprise us, that's how Elk Grove is. Our employees are that way, our volunteers that way. So thank you, and did an A-plus job, and we can't thank you enough for that job. Okay, back to some quick things, voting, Trustee Lister had his vote thing today, I voted a, folks, I understand there's not election for mayor, I'm unopposed, Trustee Frankie, Trustee Feigler, Trustee Prochnow, we're unopposed, we understand that, but remember this, on your property tax bill, $2 of every $3 you pay go to the school districts. All of our school districts have contested elections, please. One of the biggest things I hear from people is taxes, Mayor, taxes, Mayor, taxes. You have your chance to have input on the people that are going to institute 2/3 of your property tax bill. So if you got a $6,000 top property tax bill, which is a lot of people in Elk Grove have, 4,000 of it's come from these people running for office. Get informed, make sure you vote, make sure you vote. You know, the presidential election, we have 80% people vote, village election, we're lucky if we get 3% or 4% to vote. Yet local people, us as a board, your school board, we have the most influence on you every single day. Everything we do affects Elk Grove. Everything that President Biden does does not affect Elk Grove, very few does, but we do, so please, get out and vote, important. Also, a good news, as you know, 20 years ago, Elk Grove became the first town in the country, I'll say it again, first town in the United States to have a lightning detection system that covered the entire village. Not just people or parks, but also people in their backyards, in their front yards, anywhere in the village, you could hear that lightning detection system go off if there's a concern or a danger. Well, the system's getting older, and so now it's time to get a new system, most up-to-date system, and again, it's going to cover the entire village, and it's got some new nuances that we didn't have before. It's more accurate, I know coaches, and I was a coach, we'd get so frustrated, beautiful blue sky, lightning sign goes off, we have to go off the field. Two things on that, one, the older system may not be so accurate, but two, the most dangerous time for lightning is not when we see big dark clouds coming, we hearing thunder, I mean, most people know, okay, that's a danger, it's when you don't really know it's coming. It's called the unknown lightning, that's where a young man was killed up in Glenview, someone was killed on a golf course. So that's when we got this system, because that's a dangerous time. So Maggie, if you want to, is called Pocket Perry, it has the most advanced, modern lightning detection system. So Maggie, if we can, there, that's what it looks like, it's going to be high off the ground on the poles that exist now. It's got the strobe light that goes on like you had before, as long as that's blinking, that means it's still dangerous to be out, so if you're in the bowl fields, because a lot of these located by schools and parks, you'll see it. But, see, the speakers on there, it's got, trust me, you're going to hear this, like we did before throughout the village, a special alarm that goes off, then it's got three blasts when it's all clear again, and the strobe light go off. It's all, we're taking green energy today, it's all solar panel powered, it's got powerful batteries to work it. But what's also nice about this system is, you see, it's got dual speakers, it also can be used for voice notifications. As a computer generated, don't worry, you're not going to be getting robocalls from the mayor on the pole, don't worry. But it can do like Chief Walsh, you're like this, amber alerts. If we have someone missing in a park area, we can do amber alerts off of that with a voice activation, or if there's other emergency going on that a voice is needed behind it, maybe not lightning, but something we want to get out to the community, we have that ability now we didn't have before. It's tied with an app, it's all the newest ways to follow it and everything, it's got a 10-mile radius, just like the other system had, so, and it's the newest state-of-the-art. We're partnering with the park district again, so we pay for the system, 20 years ago, State Rep Kate Wojcik got us the system free, which was nice, but the village, it's on our agenda tonight, we're going to pay for the system, then the park district will pay to maintain it, they'll put it all up for us, and they'll make sure it's operational, they'll check it, they'll monitor it. So we're doing a good partnership that we always do with the park district, just like our COVID shots, we did at the park district, they give us all the facility, anytime we're there, that's the kind of working relationship we have, and we're proud of that. So that's a system, Maggie, keep going, let's see, can you scroll down, oh, there, that's important. If you notice, that's a sound coverage area for the system. Most of them are located in parks or schools, every single resident within Incorporated Elk Grove will hear that system. We're kind of used to that now, we've gotten, you know, kind of spoiled that all the last 20 years. Trust me, there's people that hear it in their backyard, the front yard, that's where a lot of risk is, you got trees around you in your yard, you can hear it, and we want to make sure as a board, we protect people. So that is going to come in and get working, thank you, Maggie. So that is going forward, and we're excited about doing that. Next news, some sad news, Don Henderson was a library board trustee since 1985, matter of fact, he's up for election today, and unopposed, he's up again. Don passed away about two weeks ago, and our condolences go with Don, you know, our prayers go with him and his family. Don was a great member of the community, a great, obviously, library board, he helped build the new library we have from the old one on Brantwood, he's very involved, very committed, think about it, 36 years. It's funny, Father, same year you and TR, my oldest boy, were born, Don started serving this community, and, and now TR, of course, he knows President Library Board, and so it shows what a small world they are, but Don did a great job in behalf of Elk Grove, so please, remember Don and his family in your prayers tonight, and, you know, the village is a better place because of him, we got the best library, and a lot of it's because of the work Don has done over the years. So that's two now, lost Jim Cogan seven months ago, and now Don, so again, our prayers go out to the family. Next, we're getting close to White Sox, don't worry, Father, we're getting close, not quite yet. Loves, as we see up here, Loves Fueling Station, we did the groundbreaking forum this past Friday, met with Chad Bruner again from Loves, so we broke ground, Loves Fueling Station will be up and operational before Labor Day, before Labor Day. Chad was telling me, it's steel framing, it goes quickly, he goes, Mayor, we want to get up and going, we make money, the village makes money, it's a win-win proposition. So we want to thank Loves, wearing my lapel, pinned Mr. Nekabaka tonight from the Bahamas Bowl, if you remember, what was unique about Loves, like tonight, we're going to be talking about sponsorship, we sponsored the Bahamas Bowl, first time ever done, got national, international coverage, and as Chad said, he was watching the game in Oklahoma City, started Googling about Elk Grove, saw what kind of town we were, followed the Makers Won It logo thing, and here it is today, he's opened up a station, and as I told, said before, I'll say again, this village will generate and get between $800,000 and $1 million a year in sales tax revenue, and it's a 20-year lease. Think about it, folks, that's $16 to $20 million in revenue from Loves coming to Elk Grove, and serves a need, our truckers need fuel, so it's at Pratt and Bussie, we're excited about it, we're glad to see it coming, and it's coming to fruition. So, you know, sometimes when this board thinks outside the box, it does work, and it works well for this community, so we're glad about that, and looking forward to it. Think about, Mr. Frankie, that's two marijuana places bringing that kind of money.
We need more marijuana.
Or more of those fueling stations, or both.
How about we put them together?
Both, well, I'm not sure if we can do that, but we'll see. Now, the news I know Father's been waiting for, I might as well go through, as you know, in 2015, we started branching out our marketing campaign, Makers Won It. And our first venture in marketing campaign was the Chicago Cubs. You remember, we broadcast Chicago Cubs, we did the first year before they won the series, then the year they won the series, and our third year, our last year of contract was the year after. And that's when the pricing, the Cubs doing well, pricing kind of changed, so we kind of moved away from Cubs, led us into the Makers Won It Bahamas Bowl. Then that was done after a couple of years, and they didn't have a game this year, and we moved into the sponsorship of the USA National Teams that are going to the Olympics, USA Track and Field, USA Wrestling, USA Triathlon. So we're sponsoring those teams coming up. Well, it's great to sponsor them, but we'd also like to find areas where we can have our commercials. Unfortunately, the USA Track and Field won't be wearing Makers Won It shirts during the Olympics, we'd love them to, but they can't, so we have to find a place to advertise. Well, if you remember, back when former President Trump ran for office, we talked to the board and came up with the idea, with him running for office and being in office, the news channel ratings are going to go through the ceiling, and we were right. We advertised a lot there, got a lot of coverage, did well. But we also saw, like him or not, with him out of office, the numbers are probably going to go down, and matter of fact, CNN just released their numbers, their viewership numbers on average are down 58% since after the inauguration, 58%. They used to average 2.3 million at a time during the day, during President Trump's presidency, they're down to 1.1 million now, and that's the latest numbers. So again, we're thanking the board outside the box. So tonight, we want to announce on the agenda, we will be sponsoring, staying in, the Chicago White Sox. Yes, the Cub Man here, we're sponsoring the Chicago White Sox. And the reason we are is, let's be honest, the Sox have a phenomenal team, Cubs are still there, but, you know, the Bears are, the Hawks a little, and the Bulls, but the Sox, just like we jumped on the Cubs bandwagon at the right time, we think we're jumping on the Sox bandwagon at the right time. So we are sponsoring, it's kind of unique what we got from them, and we thank, thank them a lot, they were very good working with Elk Grove. We are the village sponsoring the team, they're going to have a Makers Won It inning in every game. So one inning of every game will be the Elk Grove Village Makers Won It inning. They'll announce at the top of the inning, and the whole inning, you'll see our Makers Won It Elk Grove Village logo on the screen. So every game was sponsored, we're also getting TV commercials out of it too. So our TV commercials will be promoting a lot of it toward our sponsorship, a track and field, wrestling, triathlon, tied into the Olympics, but we are going to have the Makers Won It logo out there for every Sox game, except five national ones, so 157 games, and every game will have one inning, Makers Won It Elk Grove Village. So we're excited about it, the Sox were very fair with us, they worked with us, so Elk Grove's a proud town to sponsor the Chicago White Sox. And Mr. Walsh, my tongue never fell off, I made it. So we're excited about it, looking forward to it, and I may even have to watch a game now and then, so we're going to do it. So with that, we're excited to make that, again, thinking outside the box again, we're going to do that again. One, one of the few last things here, COVID stimulus money, everybody heard the government passed a $1.9 trillion stimulus money, we got the amount of money the village is going to get. Our share of the stimulus money is just over $4 million. Now, what we want help from is the governor, the money goes to the state first. The last we heard, we may get half of the money in about six months, so $2 million, and the other half of the money in three years. So our hope is, Governor, please, all towns can use help, all towns need it, like the state needs their share, the counties need their share now, the village could always use their share now too. So hopefully, we get that money sooner instead of later, because again, we all can use it to help our community out on that. But we should get close to $4 million, which could be helpful. Last couple of things here, we had a budget workshop back on the 16th, and we're prepared to go for it, our budget will be decreasing some this year, I want to compliment the department heads on doing a well jo, a great job on delivering services and watching the dollars for the community, and that's greatly appreciated. And I believe, oh, I need reappointment for three people, or four people. One needs board's approval to reappoint Butcherki to the Fire and Police Commission, he's the chairman, I want to reappoint Chairman John Glass and Secretary Fred Gonoski to Plan Commission, and to Police Pension Board, Ellen Ambrose. So can I have a motion?
Second.
Second, voice vote or a roll call? Okay, all in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Approved, 6-0, thank you. I'll give you an example, John Glass is John Glass has been chairman of the Plan Commission forty years, forty-five years? A long time. And these people keep giving Fred a long time. Butch does a great job, and Ellen, his finance helps a lot. Again, these are volunteers for the village. And I know Chief, uh, Michael and Chief Walsh should tell you, the Police and Fire Commission guys put a lot of time in. They interview every single candidate. They test them, they do all that, and every guy that works for us, these guys hire, so, good job. And I believe, Mr. Frankie, I'm getting, I'm, I'm getting there. Um, I believe... Yes, one last thing.
No.
No, no. Here's a letter from a woman. This'll kinda characterize how people would think about staff, your people, what they did, our volunteers, and everything. With, I didn't mention how many cards, getting letters, I saved this one. Uh, with special thanks. She actually mailed the day she got the shot, March sixteenth. Dear Mayor Craig Johnson, I just wanna thank you for the opportunity to get my first COVID shot. It has been such a struggle to search for a place that was taking reservations. I have to laugh. As I wanted to tell you, it felt like Christmas morning today. Everyone was such a happy mood. So good to see you in the midst of this pandemic. Every one person, every one person who directed us through the process getting our shot was so cheerful and happy to see us. They all said hello, glad you are here, and at the end, have a nice day. This was such an organized event. Everything moved swiftly and smoothly. To all those who had a part in putting this together, all the people who steered us around, from the parking lot till leaving the building, I thank you. Thank you to the people who gave us our first shot in the arm. We couldn't have received a shot without all of you. I look forward to my second shot, and I know it will be in the same fine way as today was. Again, I appreciate your kindness in doing this for the residents of Elk Grove Village. May you and the board members remain safe from COVID. God bless you, Mayor, and all in Elk Grove Village. I'll just say her first name, Renetta. But that's from a resident of Elk Grove, who's right over on Village on Lake. That sums up, guys, everything we've been hearing throughout this village. So, again, thank you for that. That's why I wanna get that last one, Mr. Frankie. So, that was nice. Okay, with that said, we move on to trustee's report. Uh, by the way, Father pointed out very appropriately, you know, Fathers, you ever notice priests, uh, garb they wear? It's White Sox colors, he said. Black and white, so...
Did you tell Father he doesn't have to stay?
Yes, I did tell him. Did I not, Father?
I wouldn't dream of missing this.
See? Because I told Father, I said, every priest I've ever met is a Sox fan. Father Hurt was, Father Fred was, Father Ed was, they all are Sox fans. I said, there's something when they go through seminary school, then indoctrinates the White Sox. What?
They need all the help they can get.
The Sox, yes, okay. So, very good. Okay, trustee's report. I'm gonna talk, believe it or not, we have a board member that started off for seminary school. Does everybody know that?
Yep.
Yep.
Trustee Schmidt, before he became police officer, am I correct?
You're right.
Started off to be a priest. So, I'm gonna start tonight with our potential future priest.
Yeah, right.
Father, I'm sorry, trustee Schmidt.
Thank you. Yeah, so, uh, I just wanna say that it was, uh, was a pleasure to participate in the, uh, vaccination clinic. It was a great experience in getting out, again, seeing people, and we had a great time. We're looking forward to the future ones, and I'll be out there volunteering for them. I also participated with you with the Loves, uh, groundbreaking. And we also went to the ribbon cutting, uh, ceremony at the, uh, Screen Americas in the, in, in the Technology Park. So, uh, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Yeah, I forgot about that, thank you. We went to a Screen America, is a most modern technology for printing. You know, they had, they opened up in, um, the Technology Park, uh, just the other day. They came from rolling metals, right? So, yep, well, trustee partner.
I'm just happy to say that I met with staff from, um, yesterday to begin planning our Memorial Day ceremony. Thanks to the, you know, permission of the board, we started making plans for the ceremony. It will be indoors again, i- at the Park District Pavilion. Um, we're also going to rely on our chiefs to help, help us figure out proper seating arrangements and spacing arrangements and how to be correct. But it will be May thirty-first, so pretty much anyone who wants to get vaccinated can be vaccinated by then. So...
Especially so many seem already vaccinated. It helps out that very much.
And if you, if you remember, last year, we did a virtual, Channel Six did a wonderful job of putting together a virtual Memorial Day ceremony with excerpts from previous years and pre-recorded things. But we're looking back to getting to real-life things, so I'm very, very excited. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Listener.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, uh, was just gonna add that I also attended the Loves, uh, Travel Stop, uh, groundbreaking. It was one of the windiest days around here.
And cold.
And the field was wide open. It was like going to a, a soccer game. Uh, it was so windy. But I did enjoy the remarks by you, Mr. Mayor, and Commissioner Morrison of Cook County. Uh, let's see, John Gallow, uh, from Gallow International, and of course, Jab Bruner. So, it was a, a very worthwhile day, even though it was very cold.
Yes.
And that concludes my report.
I'm sorry, trustee, I gotta ask, what do you mean a soccer game? I don't have peril on...
Open field.
When your grandkids get older, Mayor, they go to these soccer games on these fields, and they're just wide open. And it's just windy.
Oh, okay, okay. I was just trying to find the, where that came in, so, very good.
I knew it was there somewhere.
Okay, thanks. Trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. I also attended the, uh, Loves Groundbreaking and the Screen, uh, Ribbon Cutting, uh, and, you know, the, uh, inocula, or the Vaccination Clinic. Our volunteers were from phenomenal, and they weren't just in-village employees, but there were many, um, residents who also volunteered. Working with them, I, I got the pleasure of being able to direct, uh, direct them and get them to their seats, and very, very helpful, and we all enjoyed it. And then, on another note, I just wanted to remind everyone, the applications for the Zarnik Heffern scholarships are available online at zarnikgolf.com and on the village website, as well as with the high school counselors, uh, both Elk Grove, Conant, and St. Vitus. Uh, there are eight one thousand dollar awards to be given to, uh, Elk Grove residents who will be graduating th, from high school this year. And the applications must be received by April twenty-third. And that concludes my report.
Eight one thousand, you've really grown.
We have.
That's done great.
We have.
It helps a lot of good young kids.
And I have to say, uh, I mean, it's, it's really Elk Grove and the friends, um, and relatives of, uh, Frank and Jim Heffern, uh, we're very fortunate.
Thank you. Trustee Feiter.
Yes, the Community Character Coalition is giving this year, um, four two thousand dollar scholarships. Four of them. They decided to do that instead of having eight one thousand dollar scholarships, because there's so many big expenses in college. The, uh, forms to fill out for that are available on the website for the Community Character Coalition of Elk Grove, but also at all the high school counselors. They all have the forms. And they are due May third by three P M. And we will have, um, the announcement and the awarding of the scholarships here at a village meeting on June fifteenth. Um, I think this will be really nice to bring the kids in. We weren't able to do that last year because of the pandemic. Um, another thing, we have this Sunday, uh, the attempt to try to run a carnival, um, by the, um, Community Character Coalition, a, a, a virtual carnival. And it's going to be, uh, three P M. this Sunday. And we are trying to get young people signed up to watch this. We have a magician that will be doing a lot of, you know, tricks and so forth that are all related to ideas of character, building character and the importance of character in our society. And, uh, so, this will be a one-hour thing. And we can't obviously do the carnival that we had in past years, where we'd have thousands of people come over to the pavilion. So, we're doing this as a little extra thing to try to still, uh, do something special for the kids, and I hope it works out. The applications on this and how to hook up into it have been all over social media. Um, Kitty Weiner has been putting it on constantly, so... And there's gonna be stories, I know, uh, in the Elk Grove Journal, they're gonna do a story on this. So, I hope that the young people are able to get involved and do this. It'll be a real nice thing for them. And that includes my report.
Thank you, trustee Feiter. Trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie. Very good. Okay.
I've got gas at a loves, though.
Huh?
I've got gas at a loves.
Did you? How was it, good? All over the place you drive the hot.
Best gas in the world.
Is it? Okay. Accounts payable warrant for March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one? Did I have a tiny twenty-one?
I move we accept the accounts payable warrant of March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one in the amount of six hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eight cents.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Zarnik, a second by trustee Listener. Jen, I got it right. Please call the roll.
Trustee Feiter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie? Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Motion passes six to nothing. Move on to consent agenda, Jenna. I'm making sure I got the ads on there. Tonight, we have consent agenda items, A as in almost, and Q as in quiet. I don't know. Good enough, George? You're not next to me, I can't ask you. Next meeting, though, we'll get back to no one. Um, A through Q, I need a motion.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Frankie, a second by trustee Listener. Any trustee or any staff member, any questions, issues on consent agenda? And by the audience on consent agenda? Okay, without objection, we'll record the votes, please demonstrate it. Six to nothing. Move on now to regular agenda. Is there something we goofed up on, Mr. Romo? Oh, you're coming down for Plan Commission? Okay, uh, regular agenda, no items. Plan Commission or zoning board, Mr. Romo?
Uh, could you be my investment board trustees? You do have one item on the zoning board. Extreme data center is looking to build out a facility at twenty-eight one. In order to do so, they've requested that the village provide a variation for zoning ordinance that would allow the installation of an eight-foot-high, open black security fence with brick columns that will extend approximately seventy-two feet east beyond the front corner of the principal structure that a bus goes over. Obviously, I think I read it down because I couldn't, I worked for work. Uh, the zoning board appeals all the public hearing on their request. And by word five to two, the zoning board has, um, made a recommendation to the village board that you provide the variation. To find the paperwork acceptable, a motion to authorize village attorney to prepare the necessary documentation with due order. And I do know that the petitioners here this evening should be having questions.
You, sir? Okay. You don't need, this is going much smoother, I promise. Thank you. Um, any questions from any, uh, staff or board members? If not, I need the attorney pair, uh, motion, prepare necessary documents.
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Listener, a second by trustee, uh, Feiter. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, let direction, yes, approval. Um, sir, you're set to go. You do not need to return in three weeks or next meeting. It'd be a mere formality. Uh, vast majority of the zoning board approved it, the entire board approved tonight. So, you don't need to come back. First off, we wanna thank you for choosing Elk Grove. Uh, we know you can go many places, uh, data centers are very popular. And we appreciate you coming to Elk Grove, appreciate you working with the zoning board. We appreciate working with this board. And, um, we apologize for any inconveniences you had. Um, but we look forward to working with you and, um, moving forward in a good way. Thank you very much. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Romo? Thank you. Uh, Youth Committee trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
Oh, yes, well, I'm one of those with the scholarships, so, uh, it seems like everybody's got one now.
Good.
We've got the two, seven, one thousand dollar scholarships for, uh, with the, uh, the Youth Committee and the Parks Foundation. So, if you're interested, please get your application in by May seventh. They're at all these schools and on the village website, the Parks Foundation website. Please don't wait, it's less than two months. Since you're applying for one of the scholarships, apply for all of them, so...
His mic is muted.
You know, if you walk away from one, that'll be probably about four thousand dollars if you win.
True.
So, uh, please phone out and get us in. We'll let you know by June if you're a winner.
Jeff, can you double-check your mic to make sure it's working? Tap it. There you go. Thank you.
It was off, though.
It was?
Yeah.
And so was Ray's, and that's why...
Ah, okay.
That's what I thought, I had a hard time.
See, you could hear the, you could hear Father, because he's speaking on behalf of God. Dad oversees it. But Mr. Romo doesn't have that kind of connection, so...
This was my fault, and I apologize, because I turned it off because I thought I wouldn't hear you during your report. But it just didn't work that way.
Oh, you think that's funny?
I do.
Wait till the eight votes come out.
Could you hear that?
Wait till the eight votes come out. Okay, move on to business leaders forums. The beloved trustee Listener.
Uh, thank you. Just to update you on what's going on at, uh, Enclave. Uh, naturally, the week, the weekly Makers Wanted classes, uh, continued on Thursday mornings from nine to ten. In fact, they'll be doing that all year via Zoom on Thursdays, and they meet in person on the second Thursday of the month. I attended the March eighteenth class, uh, via Zoom, and I have to admit, I was very impressed by the information presented by John Dallas and the interaction that John had with his students. So, uh, if you ever get a chance to sign on some Thursday morning, you, I'm sure you'll find it worthwhile. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And guess what else? Trustee Listener, just talk about Cable Television Committee.
Ah. I, I was mentioning earlier, uh, there was a weekly status and information report put out. In fact, there's one put out every week, uh, come to think of it. But, uh, there was mentioned in the Comcast Xfinity Update that today, March twenty-third, F S Two, or Fox Sports Two, will be available as part of the digital starter in sports and news packages. This morning, I checked and received a message that F S Two still requires a subscription. So, I called Comcast and found out two things. One, that the digital starter package is now named the Extra Package. Yeah, I know, it's...
Now you gotta pay.
No, no, it's not extra yet. I'm, I'm sure there'll be something coming up. But, uh, but F S Two should still be included. As of two-thirty, it still wasn't up, but the gentleman I spoke with this morning said they just got the information this morning, oddly enough, and, uh, it hasn't been turned on yet. So, maybe by tonight, if you wanna check, uh, Channel three twenty-eight or Channel four oh-nine, you can see if you have it, if you have one of those packages. And that concludes my report. Uh, I'll report again next month if I have it. Oh, one other, one other thing, I'm sorry.
Hey, uh, trustee Listener, four oh-nine works.
Okay.
Right now, they got boxing on there, there's Lennox Lewis. So, it's on right now, four oh-nine.
Well, they're...
F S Two, it says right there.
See, that, when I call, it...
I have, I actually have a TV up here, Father, so...
Can you give me a better...
I just keep up on things. I just keep up on things. So it is working.
Oh, good. Another thing, there's a schedule now available on Elk Grove TV, twice a day at two P M. and six P M. Uh, if you look at your monitor, you'll see what it looks like now. It's.
Kinda blurry.
Well, it's kinda blurry now, but.
Making a little bigger.
It's really better when you go to Channel Six or Elk Grove TV. But it gives you a rundown of what's on for the day. It'll be shown at two o'clock and six o'clock. There's a program called Elk Grove Update and Elk Grove News at that time. In fact, Elk Grove Update is run by Scott Marineck, and he does a great job highlighting a lot of the news that's going on in the village. So if you can visit it, we're still hopeful that we're gonna get on the regular Comcast directory. However, after so many years, it still hasn't happened. We're beginning to wonder. But we're doing better than A T and T U verse because they're not even getting Channel Six. So, yeah, Helen's still calling, and so is Ross, but unfortunately, A T and T's not returning calls. And that concludes my report. I think I got enough trouble.
Thank you. Health and Community Services, Trustee Zarnik.
Uh, just wanna remind everyone, the Elk Grove Community Blood Drive is being held this Saturday, April third, from eight A M. till noon. It'll be held in the lower level of the Zetic Municipal Building. So please donate. It does save lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Information Committee, we're back to the beloved Trustee Listener.
Uh, thank you again, from the beloved Sam Listener. Tomorrow at seven P M., the Police Department will be virtually hosting a Neighborhood Watch meeting. Anyone interested in attending should contact Crime Prevention Officer Sloan at eight four seven, three five seven, four one five one, or M. Sloan at elkgrove.org to receive an invitation to the meeting. If you have the time, it's well worthwhile. You get some very good comments from Officer Sloan, but also from the community members that are part of it. Also, a few weeks ago, we got our twenty twenty compendium report, and I wanted to report, I think you all know this, but it's also available online. Uh, the annual compendium report is a summary of all the departmental activities during the year. I think people, all our residents and businesses of the village would find it very interesting to read this book. If you go to elkgrove.org and select the Government tab, then select Publications, then select Compendium, uh, you'll find it for twenty twenty. There's actually five years out there, two thousand sixteen through two thousand twenty. But it's, uh, it's really an interesting board. I look forward to every year reading it. It's pretty big, but it takes about a year to read, but. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Recycling Waste Committee, Trustee Feichter.
In February, um, our textile recycling program was able to collect four thousand five hundred and sixteen pounds of textiles to recycle in Elk Grove Village. The program, since we started, has been doing really well. People are participating in it. They're putting out those orange bags. And just because these, this, the question comes up sometimes, what do you do if you need an additional bag or if there's a missed collection? If you go on the internet at simplerecycling.com, then you will be able to get the bags or you can get your missed collection taken care of. And that's one of the ways to handle that. Also mention, we're in our last week now of collecting. If you still have any Christmas lights, I noticed that the, they're still being turned in here, uh, that you don't want for next year, and you have them sitting around the house, they'll take them here and recycle them. Uh, and this is, uh, pretty much the end of that recycling drive, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Feichter. Parade Committee, Trustee Zarnik.
We're going to have one Saturday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty one, two P M. The Community Character Coalition are the grand marshals of the parade. And our next parade meeting will be Monday, April fifth, at five thirty P M. Hopefully in the lower level of the Zetic Municipal Building. Uh, that's, uh, that concludes my report.
Personnel Committee, Trustee Jeffrey Charles Flankie.
Uh, yes, it's that time of year, we're looking for some seasonal part-time work for, um, college-age kids going, you know, for four years of college. Uh, they need to be Elk Grove residents. If you go to the village website and look for employment applications, you should find it under Public Works. Uh, you work through the summer. And, uh, hopefully, uh, you know, if you do a good job, you can come back. But you have to be in college and an Elk Grove resident, so apply because the jobs go quickly.
And the rumors out there that we're not gonna have summer help was incorrect. We are planning on having summer help.
This is true.
That's true.
That's why, and I heard it was on Facebook, so it's gotta be true.
Oh, really? Did our friend post it? Because everything he says is true.
Actually, it was posted on the village Facebook page, I was told.
Okay, good.
Trustee Frankie, do they also mention the starting salary?
They did, but I didn't know I should say it.
Okay.
What is starting salary?
Five hundred dollars an hour. No.
I wanna be seasonal.
Mr. Nigobacher won't do it. It's too low for him.
I believe it's twelve ten an hour.
Twelve ten an hour?
Mm-hmm.
I think it went up.
It used to be ten something years ago, but, you know.
Not bad for, for summer job.
Not bad for part-time work. Uh, you know, you work eight hours a day, but, and I believe it's ten weeks, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, and it's Monday through Friday, weekends off.
You can make some money to, uh, pay for certain things at college when you go away.
We use some of those kids too, Kobe Wright, for the concerts and stuff. Do they help us with that? Yeah, so they get, it's good.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Judiciary Planning and Zoning Committee, Trustee Prochnow.
Thank you. The J P Z Committee had two meetings in previous, previously to discuss the issue of approving the recreational sale of marijuana in Elk Grove Village. Uh, we took a committee vote. It was two to one to move it on and recommend it to the village board as a, at a committee of the whole meeting, which we had this evening. And each of us had an opportunity to discuss our personal opinions and vote for whether we thought we would like to bring it into Elk Grove or not. The vote was five to one to approve. Um, the mayor also expressed his feelings about the issue. And I guess at this point, it would be up for me to make a motion to approve the recreational sale of.
No, recommend the attorney.
To have the attorney draw up the proper papers.
Ordinance, proper ordinance, and leave available our decision on fees charged by the village and the two areas that we have control over. We have a motion by Trustee Prochnow. We have a second?
Second.
A second by Trustee Listener. All in favor, signify by, well, call the roll, please, Jen.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Trustee Feichter?
Aye.
Motion passes five to one. Again, this is to have the ordinance drawn. There'll be a vote taken on the April thirteenth meeting for the final approval of the thing. And thank you, uh, Trustee Prochnow for your committee doing that. Anything else?
No.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, please can I have item A removed off of my.
The short-term rental? Yeah. It will be done. We'll leave on the marijuana until it gets, uh, passed by final.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, Capital Improvements Committee, Trustee Zarnik.
No report.
There's no airport update this time. Still waiting for the Flight Quiet Rotation Program sometime, hopefully in the future. Uh, waiting on that. Midsummer Concert Classic Series. Mr. Nigobacher, Father, you're like this right by your backyard. We open up with Chris Daughtry on, um, July fourth in a fireworks spectacular. Um, right now, July thirteenth, we don't have replacement for Casey Sunshine Band, but we are working on it. July twentieth, we have Lover Boy, and we finish up on July twenty seventh with the Beach Boys. Mike Love and the original Beach Boys, he's back, and the Beach Boys have come to Elk Grove. Think about it. Forty years ago, fifty years ago, would you ever thought the Beach Boys would play in a parking lot in Elk Grove Village? Think about it. I'm serious.
And that there's.
Did they think that?
Did they think? There's no beach anywhere near us.
And didn't one of them just turn eighty?
Mike Love just turned eighty last week.
Just last week.
He's eighty years old.
Remember, think about this. Well, Kenny Rogers, I think, was eighty-two when he played Elk Grove.
No.
But think about, yeah. Think about this. Think about it. There's three iconic bands in the world. The Beatles, obviously can't get the Beatles, Rolling Stones, which you can, still get Rolling Stones, and the Beach Boys. Those have always been considered the three iconic bands.
Really?
Of the generation, yes. You got the Beatles being the evasion and all that. Rolling Stones, the rock, and the Beach Boys being the summer fun. Yep.
California.
So we gotten, uh, we got one of the three iconic bands. It's pretty good folk, though. So we're looking forward to it. And I talked about before, we're working, thinking of a way to have a celebration of everyone coming out of the pandemic. So we're working on that. We'll be in touch in the future. But save your ribbons. Because your ribbons from your trees, don't take them down yet. But when you come out of pandemic, we're gonna take down your ribbons, and there will be prizes if you keep those ribbons. And we'll tell you about that later. So keep that. Uh, special events, next one is Memorial Day coming up.
Yes, sir.
On May thirty first. Liquor Commissioner will report. Mr. Romo, any report?
No report, please.
I know our acting village clerk has a report.
Yes, um, early voting started this past Monday on the twenty second. Um, hours are Monday through Saturday from nine to five, and Sunday from ten to four. And early voting goes until April fifth.
So we're looking forward to coming to vote. Uh, they have special distancing. You know, so for this election, they only had three voting booths.
Yeah.
For the presidential, they had about twenty.
Well, there's hardly any cars on in front of the.
So it's easy to park, easy to get to. So, yeah, we encourage you all to vote. We talked about that earlier. Uh, Mr. Nigobacher, take a look. Nope, nothing on the attorney, so no unfinished business. New business items from the board or staff?
Um, just wanna check, I think it's April fifth, if I'm not mistaken. Um, Kobe could verify that, that they're gonna have beginnings of the leaf collection. I saw that announcement.
Beginning in one day.
You have to have it out for the whole week, right? So have it out by seven A M. Is it Monday, the fifth? So by Monday, April fifth, seven A M., have your leaves out in the street like you do in the fall. Know it in the fall. Sometime during that week, we don't know what street they're doing, what days. So everyone have your leaves out by Monday morning, April fifth. We'll have a street sweepers come by, a leaf pick up. We do one, pass through the village. What are we doing the branch pickup?
Follow the week, follow two weeks, the east side, one side, west side.
Okay, so on the week of April twelfth and April nineteenth, have your branches out, and we'll be picking up our branch pickup program we do every spring. So that's a chance to clean your yard up. We're getting some nice weather coming up. We had a beautiful weekend. Uh, and yesterday, Monday, was great. Um, so get your leaves picked up you want to clean out, and you can get your branches picked up, so be ready for that. Anything else? Um, I think, uh, we owe Father a hand, stuck around the whole meeting.
Yay.
Now, I was told he was there to hear the mayor's report to help prepare for his sermon coming up on Sunday. So we're getting close, you know, Sunday's Palm Sunday. So, you know, he wants to hear words of wisdom, which I respect, and I'm fine with.
He wanted to know what not to do.
So with that said, folks, Mr. Petzel, how's the world treat you today?
Excellent, Mayor, report.
See?
No.
And Mr. Petzel, thank you for wearing the throwback button. Makes me feel good. Makes my heart good. Helen, I'm coming on the twenty third? Twenty seventh at ten fifteen.
Yeah, today I had Russell Spashman from the Elk Grove Museum talk about the history of our heritage. It arose from churches, uh, schools, uh, the airport, and Charles Holdemeyer, who was our first.
Chick Holdemeyer, yep.
And the first person that bought the set next house, who I live, that's who I live, is Holdemeyer in Elk Grove.
Oh, you live on a street named after him. And the first home that person moved in on is on Forest, on Forest Lane, right by Briarwood.
And so he did the history. Next month, he'll tell us what's new and everything.
Well, a lot of people think I'm history, but, uh, that's a different story.
Yeah.
Well, I'm looking forward to it, Helen, and I will bring chocolates, not pencils. I made that mistake once, never again. We'll bring the chocolates. Oh, yeah, never again on that one. Uh, so I'm looking forward to it. So anything else? I think that's all. Father, everything good? Thank you. So with that said, I need a motion, not bad. One hour.
Not bad.
It is.
I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so, um, one last thing. Mr. Nigobacher, who's gonna win the N C double A tournament?
Baylor.
I'll take Gonzaga.
Or Gonzaga.
I'll take Loyola.
You pick Baylor, I'll take Gonzaga. I got my, three of my four in there still, so I'm okay. Okay, we'll make a bet. Um, motion to adjourn?
We did.
We're ready.
Good. Did you call the vote?
No.
Jen, call the vote.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Trustee Feichter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
What do you think? Jen did a nice job filling in?
She did a great job.
Okay, so we'll be back in three weeks, folks. See everyone on April sixth for the second vaccination shot. We'll be calling you soon for the new one meeting. Adjourned.